I'm just glad I'm still around to be tired.
Isn't that true?
Yep. Excuse me, hi. Is it on now?
That's what I was saying.
Good thing I didn't say anything stupid.
You never say anything stupid.
Yes, I do.
How's it going?
Thank you. And is it possible, um, later you could provide me the contact information for, Rick and Driscoll?
Right here.
Hello, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
So, um, I was told you're the new principal for Davis.
Yeah, it's nice to meet you.
Excellent. We're doing a back-to-school kind of interest story. Could I contact you sometime in the next few days to ask your details?
I'll be there all day tomorrow, so, and I don't know about Thursday, but all day tomorrow for sure.
Excellent.
And you got my number?
I don't get how.
I'll give you my cell phone. 679-1383. Because if I'm the only one in the office and you call the office, it doesn't hook to me, so I don't know that you call. Sorry, that was 679-1383.
Excellent, thank you.
How's your? I'm just kind of by the way.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of those. I've got a ten or five years, uh, it's the worst. It's about the same. My name is.
Uh, that's not bad.
It's kind of a.
Shit.
There's this one secret. Sorry. Does there anything you need help from me or?
Do you have a commercial?
I got a commercial.
Call Squares World.
Hello. So. What I'm hoping is this will go up after replacement. And it just costs fifty bucks.
Use Squares World.
No, you have to go to your email. I might have to email it.
So I haven't done any.
I'm from the socials. Should achieve.
Yes, so I'm going to keep up with this. This rod, they're comboed, which actually sounds to me. And they're, since they have themselves, they're, they're, they're claiming to be on this one. Can I actually just type in? This was the one that the light issues related to that.
Oh. What's up?
Four ways.
It's nice.
Not through way to the right.
That's not about the. I bet you can help. From my experience with CFO and others, guys. They also provide the damage check.
Did you break a rod? Sunday on a failure. It's just probably.
They clean them so. Last month's idea.
There's actually, no, it's about, there's a big rock trap, big rock trap. Well, it's kind of pretty. And you got the mission snap, they just pulled it in, but it's just, it's very weird thing. I have to run. Six, they were probably as fresh as you, it was on a great castle trip to Saint.
Well, I can be there. I was just on the doors.
Except as far as trying to get to kids.
Were you there? Do you want to go to other group two, two years?
I don't think.
Saturday weekend, so, which means tomorrow. Yeah. Um, the daughter is going to pour in. We really can't, we really can't have this, maybe two separate texts, so. Um, yeah, I got some of the. In case we have to. Oh, doctor. Those are, and then whether, uh, guys change black group, play some that trip. Travis, I can play for this party, it's out the key, I mean, I just been hearing. It's a lot of switchbacks. Sure. And they want a projector.
We can see off the projector. That first class, I think it's down.
Yeah, I, I think. Do you still want to do something? Do you want to talk about? What's over? I mean, if we did turn a rod. So it's Friday, Saturday. Actually, we're done. Sunday, Sunday morning, Saturday. That was, that was very good.
John, John. My buddy. Are you a brrr? Dealer? Dealer? Dealer?
I looked up last night, you were gone.
I know, I had some other commitments, sorry.
I've waited.
I've never been accused of being stealth.
Uh, no, no.
We got everybody, don't we?
I'll spread it. Do you want to have?
I'll get it done for you.
Oh, I will, I can.
Give everybody a minute to get onto their computers. This is it, right? I feel like there needs to be somebody else here for some reason.
Sitting in my chair.
See, we are very right here. Very right leaning here.
But I'm in the middle.
Yeah, you're in the middle. I can't recall, there was an issue. A rider, a left fish. What are you guys doing?
You guys ready?
Hey, guys, I'm ready.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. So I apologize for being a few minutes late. Thank you for waiting for us, but I want to welcome everybody to our regular session of our board. If you can join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda.
Madam Chair members of the board, I recommend that we make a change to the agenda. Add an executive session after nine, um, after board roundtable. Executive session will be for personnel and possible legal action.
Okay.
So it would be ten and adjourn would be eleven.
Okay.
The adjourn from executives.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the agi- the agenda as is with the executive session at the end?
Someone.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Please remind me of that when we get down there, please. Okay, we're down to our consent agenda items. We have our minutes from our July twentieth meeting and our payment of the bills listed on our agenda, our consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
She moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I need to make sure that I abstain myself from approving check number one one nine one five zero, an amount of three hundred and seventy dollars to two guys scoring. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes down to our school reports. Do we have anybody that would like to share anything? Okay, oh. I'm just gonna take that as no.
No, I'm, I'm not.
Oh, you're not, oh. Okay. Like, what do we got going on?
Psych.
Okay, so we'll move on to our discussion items with no school reports. The first item for discussion is our pathway to excellence, board and district goals.
I thought there'd be some school reports. Madam Chair members of the board, I'd first like to express appreciation for attendance of the board retreat last night. It was well attended by the board and by the administration. Thought we had some very good discussion and it leads right into our board goals. Pathway to excellence, probably had five or six years now. It's also our strategic plan. It puts really who we are and what we're about on paper. Starts with our vision and our mission. I'm not going to take the time to go through those, if you're okay with that. I do like our core values. I do think it represents who we are and what we are as I, as I stated. Biggest challenge in an organization our size is to communicate what we expect of our employees, what we expect of the students and what we expect of all of us in general. And I think that's a good starting. We do have very high regard for our crisis plans. Safety of our students and our staff is truly one of our number one priorities. And we take great pride in that. And the board has been extremely supportive of many measures to keep our schools and our students safe. So thank you for that, too. Respect, responsibility, you can, you can, you can see those. Board goals, um, there is a little change. If you remember last year, we had, um, the opening plan. We still have an opening plan, which was required because of our federal grant, grants, but in terms of a board priority, it's still there, it's active. You approved it, I think, two months ago. I don't know if it's a real goal, because we're going to have school. If there are issues, um, health issues, pandemic, flu, we'll deal with them when that occurs. But in terms of our emphasis, I do like that we are talking about the pathway to excellence, which is high reliability schools, is our framework for school improvement. I thought that was the best part of the discussion is high reliability schools is the framework that we've selected for five years now. We are going to stick with it. It drives our instruction, it drives really everything that we do and what we're about. And you could throw something out, I'd respond back, it's in high reliability schools. You look at our collaboration, well, um. You look at our collaboration in PLCs, level one in high reliability schools deals with safe and collaborative culture. Through our principals and our administrators, we began working with the PLCs, professional learning communities, and that's part of the framework that we follow also. But it's because of the high reliability schools that moved us in that direction of collaboration. And it's something that, uh, I'm, I'm really proud of that we do. And I'm not going to read through all of those, even though I think it's something that we need to spend more time out in the public expressing that. These are the indicators of success for us. Number one, for safe and collaborative culture, these are the eight things that we can show with evidence that we are doing to be safe and collaborative. Level two is effective teaching in every classroom. To me, it's a common sense approach. That's what we're about, is what happens in those classrooms every day. By the way, and I think, still haven't heard, but all of our schools have been certified in level two. And, uh, that means now we're certified on level one and level two. I guarantee it, we're the only school district in Wyoming, and maybe even in our region, that has every school certified. If we don't have them all certified, like I said, it's, the summer came at a bad time, so I haven't heard. They have opportunities to catch up and they will. Impressive. If you look at level two, what we're talking about in the classroom, it's extremely impressive. The school leader communicates clear vision. Support is provided to teachers continually to enhance their skills. When we saw comments about professional development, that's why we do professional development. It's right there in terms of our effective teaching in every classroom. Predominant instruction practices throughout the school are known and monitored. Teachers are provided with clear ongoing evaluations, that's why we have, I think, a great evaluation system that actually is linked back to high reliability schools. They're hand in hand. Our evaluation system is not a gotcha. It's what teachers can do to improve their practice. And, um, more training is required, but we put a great deal of time in training and professional development for that. Teachers provided with job embedded professional development, again, professional development. Teachers have opportunities to observe and discuss effective teaching. You heard, uh, an example of, um, what do we call those, those, uh, lessons? Lesson studies? And how we do those on K twelve, pretty impressive. Level three deals with guaranteed and viable curriculum. Guaranteed is that every student gets the same curriculum viable is that we have time to be successful in that curriculum. That is our next challenge, is working on level three. If you remember, high reliability schools requires us to work on level one, two, and three, to be certified in level three. So we'll continue with what we've done in the past, just improving, um, again, if you look at level three, to me, it's a common sense approach to what we should be doing every day in the classroom. It provides us a framework to do that, and, um, we've stuck to it. We have not waffled in and out of other programs, we've stayed with high reliability schools. And, um, the evidence that is working is we had schools certified level two. And it is an outside agency that comes in and reviews our evidence of those in cases. So back to our pathway to excellence and our goals, that's why that's our number one goal. I added the fundamentals of the professional learning community, um, just so individuals that go to this, uh, document can see what we're talking about, when we're talking about, uh, PLCs and collaborative teams. The assessments, standards and assessment work K twelve, and it's provided a guaranteed viable curriculum. Like I said, you can see it all flows together. Second goal deals with communication. I think it was probably the number one thing we talked about yesterday again, is communication. We do have a very good communication plan, and this will be brought before you again next month. We are suggesting a few changes. One of those changes deals right here, develop protocols for communicating current events, including critical issues and topics of interest or importance to stakeholders. Uh, we have school reports. We didn't have it at tonight, but what we're going to do is actually bring a collaborative team before the board and have them present a five-minute, this is what we're doing. So collaborative teams could be a first grade, um, at Uta Meadows, or it could be the first grade throughout the district. What we're doing is a collaborative team. Could be the social studies department at the high school. We think that will give you a little bit more information about, uh, what we're doing in those teams, the collaborative teams, and what they're doing, not from us or the principals. I'm sure there'll be other congratulations at that time, too, but that's something we'll add in there. That was Doug's idea, I think it's a great idea. Get a chance to see some more of our staff. The other thing that you can see that'll probably be changed is the opening plan. I'll probably still have something in there, because like I said, it's required for our federal grants, that we have an opening plan, but, um, it's, it's reflective of what we do. But right now, the bottom line is, our expectation is tier one instruction in the classroom, following protocols of public health and CDC, but that is, we're going to be at school. Communication is probably still one of our biggest challenges, and we'll keep at it. I think we're all committed to do a better job with communicating internally and externally. Internally with our employees, externally with all of our stakeholders. One of the avenues of that is this meeting, and you can see that unless someone's online, we don't get a lot of opportunities in terms of those, even those school reports or what you, decisions you make to the public. We have to find another way to do it. What is nice is these four meetings are recorded, so someone can watch them at their own time if they have questions. The board has been very approachable, it's just we need to find better strategies to communicate the successes and if there are challenges involved, that we have a pretty good avenue to communicate also. If you have some suggestions, things you'd like to add, just let me know and I'll add them to the next, next one, okay?
Okay.
Uh, let's see. The third bullet is all schools certified, it's high reliability schools, level one, ten to three. And you can see, uh, by 2024. Our staff and our principals asked that we give them a couple of years to work on level three. I think it's reasonable. It may take three years, but at least that's our goal right now, is to be certified one, two, and three by 2023.
And you think even with the two years, I mean, it may take three, but the two years, having it on paper is still reasonable, because I know there was concerns that we may be moving too fast.
So we have a few principals out there, what do you guys think? Is that too fast?
I think it's reasonable, two years. We feel more comfortable in level three than level two in a lot of those bullets, and so it's why I think two is...
Yeah, two years time, that sounds about right.
Okay.
And then the fourth bullet is, I think, maybe we need to move it to the top. It's we focus on live skills, which are citizenship, positive behavior supports, anti bullying, healthy living strategy, social emotional health of students and staff, and accountability for students, parents, and staff. It's an important thing, it's probably is the glue that holds everything together. If we're not disciplined in how we do what we say we're going to do, our district will struggle. So we need to refocus on that. You guys know that we will have a new social emotional curriculum for our students. We will have opportunities to think through some organization for, I'll say, health, emotional, mental health, services, get an easier platform to get help for our students and our staff, and their families. So we're looking forward to that, too. So I plan to spend a lot of time with the idea of positive behavior supports in our district plans in our schools, to reemphasize the importance of having high expectation for student, staff, behavior, and follow through. That's why I hope that you guys agree that this needs to be a board's goal.
I definitely agree.
The district goals, we'll work with the administrators next week, so they'll probably look a little different when we bring them to you next week. Any questions? The other parts, again, I like them, that's why I lie there. But you can see the critical commitments, what we're committed to. Again, they flow with the high reliability schools work. We just put them on paper as kind of an emphasis. I don't know if you have any questions or comments about those, but I do like the non-negotiables at the bottom. We treat everyone with dignity and respect. We work in collaborative teams. We are professionals working in professional organizations. Student learning is our focus and priority.
I like those as well.
So again, if you'd like to add goals, now's the time. We'll carry this back next month. Send it to me, I'll send it back out to the board, whatever you want to do. This would be the strategic plan for 2022.
I think everything is pretty much covered from at least our discussion last night, and I think the direction we need to go, especially for the board's goals.
And just to add, I think it's important that these get out, get talked about and discussed, because possibility with the election issue, and they have different individuals on the board. It helps to have a focus already set by those remaining board members, and helps to define what we're doing for those potentially new board members, too. So I think it's good to have a strong set of board goals.
Definitely. Any other questions or comments, guys?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, down to our back to school calendar.
As chairman members of the board, just kind of a reminder about calendars. We actually tend to get back to business on the 15th of August. All our schools are open at that time. All the offices will be open on the 15th, they'll start registration. We start with our new teachers on the 17th at 7:30 in here, which is, I think, is that a Wednesday? You're welcome to come, have some breakfast, and we'll introduce you. They have a pretty healthy agenda in terms of what we do for our new staff. We have a lot more new staff than I anticipated. It seems we just kept losing people at the end of the year. And our induction program is exceptional, so we try to give them a lot of support early. Monday, the 22nd is a workday for our teachers, so our staff will be back in their buildings. Tuesday, August 22nd, certified staff in service starting at Davis at 7:30 with the breakfast to 12. Again, we'd love to have anyone who'd like to come. We do an internship once you're out, and you can kind of see how we start the year. Kind of a little, I'd say it's retro, back to, we're going to go over the handbook with the staff, go over insurance, go over things that we think they need to know. And then there'll be some Title IX training, and again, start the year off right. This year, less district training, more building in service. So the principal's leaving that. Wednesday, we'll have the support staff at Davis, 7:30. Again, you're welcome to come, similar format, except we separate the two.
What times are all of those?
7:30.
7:30?
Yeah. Again, have some breakfast, we usually start at eight. Eight oh five. Glad you're welcome to attend. Monday, August 29th, first day of school. So that's really the calendar.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions for, about that? No? Okay. I'm putting stuff in my calendar, so. Okay, down to our WSBA fall roundup.
It's truly a calendar item, too, I guess, but that is scheduled for September 21st at Green River. And we have several go every year. That's when we meet the Wyoming School Boards. They review the kind of the finances, potential legislation, and it's always a, I think, pretty good meeting. It's a long drive for an hour meeting, but it's worth it. So all that can attend, we'll have a vehicle and drive you there.
I'm thinking I should be able to go. Does anybody know off the top of their head?
I will, I'll go.
Yeah? Anybody else? For sure?
What time of day is it at?
It's at night.
Yeah, we...
It's night.
We leave at five. I think it's at six. What day is that again, Ryan? 21st.
21st, Wednesday, September.
You can put me down tentatively.
Thank you.
I don't know where I'll be work-wise, so I guess you can put me down, but I don't know if I'll be available, so.
I'll just call when it gets closer.
Okay.
Okay. And then co-curricular and interscholastic activities.
As chairman members of the board, I was asked to bring this up and review this by several board members. You may not recognize what this is about, but this is about our activity trips. And if you know, we've had concerns for years in terms of our activities. And the way this policy is written, it talks about Wyoming High School activities versus co-curricular activities and the travel that's allowed. So if you're okay, there's a couple of parts I would like to point out. There is no changes, this is really just to have a discussion yet, but I think there probably needs to be. If you scroll down through this, activities for students shall include extracurricular activities, which are defined as those the Wyoming High School Activities Association sponsors, and school-related activities occurring outside the regular classroom or outside the regular school hours. Co-curricular activities, which are defined as those school-sponsored and school-related activities, which are the extension of the classroom and are integral part of a particular course of study. School-endorsed activities are defined as those school-sponsored activities and school-related activities which occur outside the typical school day, for which we have a fully assigned sponsor. I don't even know if we have any school-endorsed activities. We used to have like the chess club. I don't know if we have any clubs anymore that have designated sponsors.
No, robotics, maybe.
Oh, robotics, yeah.
Esports.
Yeah, esports.
What about math counts? What does that fall under? Is that an extension of?
That would be co-curricular.
Co-curricular.
So the reason why those are important is because that determines who pays for their travel. And so if you look at extracurricular activities, tonight, it is on the agenda that you will approve the activities that we participate in, Wyoming High School activities. So you'll be able to see the list of what they are. Matter of fact, I'll throw those up right now. They're very inclusive. So you see boys, girls, and combined. Probably the ones that are the foggy ones for most people are the ones that are combined. So art, DECA, drama, FBLA, FCCLA, FFA, journalism, marching band, music, Skills USA, speech, spirit, and student council. If you notice, we don't have a Skills USA. The rest we have assigned sponsor for those activities. Again, these are Wyoming High School activities sponsored. These would be school-excused activities if the activities are during the day. If the travel weren't, and there's an overnight trip, we pay for the travel, we pay for the overnight trip. We only pay meals for overnight activities, culminating events, excuse me, culminating events. It's all in this policy. So there's a lot here that we need to discuss, but you can see that, and I believe, I was hoping Doug would be there. Spirit, does that include our dance and cheer? So those are Wyoming High School activity events. And again, hopefully you'll see why that's important here in a minute. So if we look at the activities, it explains, those are the Wyoming High School activities and how we drove them. Transportation, two to four extracurricular events shall be scheduled and funded by the district. There are restrictions. You cannot drive yourself to a Wyoming High School activity event because of the safety issues and liability. You have to travel with us. You can come home with your parents, but there's a sheet you sign to take that responsibility. Meals will not be provided for participants except culminating events. That's why we have booster clubs. Most of the booster clubs will generate funds to provide meals on these away trips. That's a lot what they do. That is what I believe the intentions was for those booster clubs. Was to provide food and maybe some other things, but it was mostly to support the students when they're on these away trips. All students participating in extracurricular activities shall meet and maintain all eligibility requirements enclosed by Wyoming High School activities and our own eligibility requirements, which are more stringent than Wyoming High School activities. And we keep very close tabs on that. For travel fees and meals for national events, those Wyoming High School activity regional recognized events, and those having qualifying criteria, such as district state or regional competition, shall be paid by the district. That is a really important point of this policy. It has to be a qualifying event. The challenge is, we have no qualified events to send the drama team to Disneyland. It's not a qualifying event. So it's outside the scope of Wyoming High School activities. Our dance team finishes at state. There is no qualifying event, it's for some other competition. So according to our policy, those are paid for by the district. Anything outside of that is questionable if we even approve or allow. That is where it's been fuzzy. So I'm going to keep going. In case of mixed gender activities, co-sponsors shall deal with it, I'll just say with that. Those students shall be deprived of participation in or admission to any extracurricular activity because of his inability to pay. We are so fortunate, our kids participate, basically, we don't have a participation fee. In other school districts, like you find in Utah, it's very expensive to play these sports. Extremely expensive. So right now, you guys fund it all, which I think is fantastic for our kids. But if there are events that they qualify for that they can't pay, Mr. O'Neil funds the way. And so kind of with that, there are Wyoming High School activities that do have national events that we've sent kids to. I think DECA, FBLA, FCCLA, even FFA, I think, has national qualifying events, and we send kids to. But only those kids that qualify. We don't send the whole team. So if you qualify in FFA, we send whoever qualifies for that national event. And we pay, and we send our sponsor. And if it's a mixed, we send more than one sponsor. Mixed gender, okay. So co-curricular is a little different. Like I said, we don't have a lot of these, but we have a few. The cost of travel, lodging, and meals shall be the responsibility of the group of participating students or the participating student. Prior permission to engage in the activity must be obtained by the advisor or sponsor from the building principal. In scheduling an activity, critical academic dates such as pause, not pause anymore.
Wipe off.
Wipe off now, so let's know the reason to change this. Final weeks at our quarter semester must be considered, so the activity does not conflict with those dates. Any such conflict shall be bound to deny the activity. The board has expressed that missing school for some of these activities should be denied anyway. They need to do these in a summit. So this would be where we would potentially change that if you wanted to. Travel requiring overnight stay must be approved by the building principal and the superintendent. Travel outside of a 350 mile radius must be approved by the building principal, the superintendent, and the board trustees. That is why they come when they're going to California or Florida. We designated 350 because typically that's within Utah. In our state, it's further than that, but Utah is closer 350 around trip. So they can do an overnight trip, if it's down to Salt Lake and back. So we've talked about that before, too. Lots of opportunities in Utah that we're not taking advantage of. So the 350, like I said, was strategically picked. Maybe it's time that that be changed. And I'm not thinking less. I'm not thinking more, I'm thinking less. Times have changed, costs are through the roof. If we don't value our own days in school, jam on us. And I know extracurricular activities and co-curricular are very important still school. So let's see. This is a key that we've struggled with a little bit. Only students active in a specific activity in a group and sponsor will be approved to attend the event. In case of mixed gender activity, the co-sponsor activity shall make proper arrangements. In other words, if we send the drama team, we don't send the drama class. There's a big difference. So that's, we need to make sure that's followed. And again, those students need to be in good standing. Any requests for travel under this subsection, which have been made on travel or trip request form, and you guys have seen those forms. Any request at a minimum shall include the cost per student, travel specifications, list of sponsors, fundraising activities, and be based on educational purpose. All students traveling to these events must be students in good standing, as identified by the building principal and classroom teachers. All participants must have signed parental approved, completed emergency forms as part of it. And again, probably not going to be a popular discussion, but the challenge comes when we send students on non-qualified events out of state. The reason why it's a challenge is because typically they've raised funds for those. What that's done is it's changed our booster club's agenda for fundraising. It's not gone from just providing meals, it's now we're going to provide a trip to Florida. And that's a lot more costly than a hamburger at McDonald's. The other reason why I bring it up is because it's been brought to my attention by the board, and it's something that we need to revisit. If you go to the letter of the law that's in this policy, we wouldn't send trips except to those who qualify through Wyoming High School Activities Association. I can't even think, co-curricular, who that would be? It would probably be the drama class, not the drama team.
Are you talking about the overnight?
Yeah.
So typically, you see, I have a couple of, you have, so the middle school one that's been requested for approval the last few years. It's a middle school, Spanish at the University of Wyoming. That's the only middle school one. We do have state drama, which is a co-curricular, and that's in, I suppose, in Cheyenne or Laramie last year.
And that is Wyoming High School activities.
Yeah. That's the average one, right? Because the drama classes are really large, so you're talking 50 to 100 students.
But again, the key to that is those that are competing should be...
Question, has there been any of these extracurricular activities in St. George or Gillette as an example?
Yeah, we've actually, Chad's not back there, but when Horizon was, I guess before COVID, we took our kids to Southern Utah all the time. Camping, activities like that.
So that falls, that falls outside the 350 miles. If you go to Gillette, you're talking...
Yeah, you get more food.
Yeah, you're looking at 450 miles.
Yeah.
You know, in my opinion, my recommendation would be to change that to 450 miles.
I don't even know if that would get you to Southern Utah, would it?
377 to center of St. George.
But we could still approve it, though.
And that's the thing, is you can set it anywhere you want, and the board can always approve those. Those aren't really Wyoming High School activities, they're not really co-curricular. It's a school of 65 kids that are going to go on a backpacking trip. And as an extension of what they do, very appropriate, I mean, and very inexpensive. And typically, the district pays for it. So a little different, but that's the problem, is you need to have that kind of flexibility, but at the same time saying, we're not going to save up for four years to go to Florida. but at the same time saying, we're not gonna save up for four years to go to Florida. If we review it, and we will, John will be the one that has to help me with this. If we review our booster club fundraising, we are the, how does John put this? We are the fiduciary agent, but we don't have anything to do with what they do and how they do it. We just keep the money. I'm really concerned about the amount of money some of our booster clubs have in storage. They've raised their funds under the auspices of Evanston High School, when they're outside of Wyoming High School Activities Association. So it's not fraud, but at the same time, it's not a school-sponsored activity until the board has approved it. And these fundraisers have been occurring the last three years.
So can you give us an idea of what kind of amounts of money are within them, those accounts?
John, do you have?
Just general, just rough estimate on a couple of them?
Last I heard is.
We don't need to know the program.
What last I heard is there's $50,000 in one, $15,000 in another with typically less than 20 participants. Again, I was a booster parent once, and our goal was to leave in the account the same amount that we started with. Well, it was $3,000. So we raised funds, we bought meals, and we had $3,000 when we left.
And you have some sports or activities that are just very crumple, and they never ask for anything, you know, and those.
That's one of the issues we've talked about, is the inequity in terms of fundraising. Football team can raise a great deal of funds in a short amount of time because they have that number of participants and it's that visual. But across country, even though they've been pretty successful, maybe not. Girls swimming, they can't raise the same amount of funds. So how do you deal with those inequities? Well, Mr. O'Neil's been very good handling those requests. But there are some things that really worry me, and some of you have expressed that it worries you too. $50,000 in an account, scary. There's, as you guys just went through the policy, there's nothing in there that every four years we violate our own policy and send them someplace else. It's not in there. That's believed by some of these groups, that every four years they take one of these big trips. It's not in there. So it's not us telling them. I was on the board, so my experience, when a group comes before you and says, hey, we wanna go, and they're excited, you want them to go. Well, our policy has kind of made that foggy. We need to make it less foggy. We need to have this discussion again. You guys realize, I know, that we're gonna have groups come here if we make changes to this. And it'd be extremely.
And that's okay.
So.
Because the concern really is inequity and to safety of the students.
Liability.
Liability.
Less than school.
School time. And.
You know, most of these monies are raised by the boosters. Do we know where these monies come from? Do they mostly come from companies or individuals?
It's a combination.
Yeah, I think there's, the ones I'm most aware of, they're service type things. They have golf tournament. We sell wild cards. I know they used to work at fireworks place. Those funds went back. We used to pick up trash, sell potatoes.
There are several sports that it's a requirement that they have to identify a certain amount of companies that they have to go. No, and it's more than one sport, that they have to go and talk to those companies and ask for a donation.
See, that's one of those challenges where, you don't blame, they're gonna go as a member of the Evanston High School team, asking for funds, when, you guys realize, you've seen our budgets. We spend a great deal of money on these activities, and those companies fund us through their taxes. It's not the school going to them, asking them for additional funds for these activities. It's the individuals or the booster funds. Maybe it's a gray line to you, but to me, we crossed it. They're raising funds in the names of Evanston High School, and it's not necessarily.
Well, and I think part of the problem though too, as, and I've heard this from businesses and community members, is they're donating to those entities because they believe that it will be used to fund meals on their trips, or help buy equipment, or, you know, things that have to do with that sport. But when they find out, oh, this was to pay for a trip to go so-and-so, you know, such place, or whatever, they're getting irritated with that. That shouldn't even be on the table.
So is this something we wanna tap?
Yes.
Try to tighten this up?
Yeah, we need to.
I agree with that.
So if you have some suggestions, just email me. I'll get with Mr. O'Neil, assistant superintendents, and the principals, and we'll do some tightening. We'll bring first reading next month. We will get some upset parents, I believe. But I think, again, our focus has to be on our students and what's best for all of them. And Wyoming High School Activities is a great organization that we support wholeheartedly. And that gives us some safety, even though tonight you'll approve the liability insurance part of that. We have safety in those activities. Anything outside, we're taking on additional liability, I believe.
Well, not just the students, but our businesses and our local community members who wanna support the kids, but, you know, just sport after sport after activity after activity, and they're just taxing the heck out of them for fundraising and.
Okay.
So I'm gonna throw something out there real quick on your pause testing. Instead of going white top, can you just go state sponsored testing and put some changes? So we don't have to revisit this thing?
Yeah.
So anyway, just throwing that out there, just state sponsored testing.
The same thing for Oklahoma, they're talking about changing.
Okay, well, thanks for working on that. Lost where we are. The Coalition of Wyoming Schools.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we had an executive session about this issue last month. It was discussed and decided that we need to discuss it in public also. Just a brief summary, the Coalition of 18 school districts were put together years ago to lobby the state for the external cost adjustments, which is cost of living adjustments. For the last 10 years, they have not followed the law. They have not provided those external cost adjustments, and we have felt a pinch probably greater than anybody. We've had to cut seven out of the last 10 years, staff and budgets, to make things work, when the state withheld over $200 million from school districts, not just us, throughout the state. This coalition works as a lobbying force and potentially as seeking litigation to solve this problem. What the commitment is, is to be a part of the coalition. Basically, it's based on the number of students we have. It's just to deal as a lobbying effort for ECAs and the funding formula. If they change to more of a active legal action, the board would have to decide if they'd wanna participate then. Just a brief history, and I thought it was well discussed last time, is Unitah County Number One was one of the original four districts in the Campbell lawsuits that sued the state over inequities in school funding. We were with them through Campbell Three, I believe, and in 2006, when those finally came through, it helped us greatly. But still, the fundamental issue with the model is the inequities built in that I don't think anyone described. We are still either the bottom or the second to the bottom lowest funded school district in Wyoming per student. And we have been since the early 80s because we have a prototypical school district, four elementaries, two middle schools, a high school, and alternative school. The model's based on that. We receive nothing extra, and it's a little disheartening. I can tell you that, I guess the bad news, if there is bad news, the school district that's on the bottom this year is probably the highest performing school district in the state. So there's no link to per student funding to the quality of education. They have definitely a different demographic than we have. And they're not losing enrollments like we have out of the last nine or 10 schools. So my recommendation, and you guys need to discuss this, is that we join this coalition. To join, we would send a letter of interest to, I believe, Hickey Evans. And there would be a fee, and you can see in here that it's between, what did it say, eight to 10,000? I'm pretty sure, like I said, we have this reputation of being a bigger school district than we are. I think they're always shocked when they find out we only have 2,700 kids, and they have much more than that, so we win. I'm not sure exact amount, but you can see the ballpark there. I think it'd be well worth it. I do have strong recollections of when we were part of that lawsuit, that it was a burden on the school district, that it was hundreds of thousands of dollars in 1987, 88, 89 through 2000. $9,000 is not a burden to us legally. If they seek legal action, we're gonna have to discuss it again. And the board would have to vote to participate in that legal action.
So this eight to $10,000 is just for lobbying purposes?
Yes. It actually takes care of Hickey and Evans for their part of it.
And right now, there's 18.
Yes.
That are currently in the coalition, and they're still trying to gather more.
Yes. I'm really gonna push the Southwest superintendents. We see a lot of more Southwest districts, but Unitah Four and Unitah Six, I would really like to encourage them to participate. They're funded at a different level, but still, they've missed out on a great deal of funding too because of the ECA. This is a perfect year to have that argument. Inflation is higher than it's been in 40 years, and the state provided no ECA for our staff, no cost of living increase this year. So we're taking steps backwards. I can tell you that we have lost, I keep telling you, we're competitive with Utah? No, we've lost any competitive advantage. Individuals that have left us have told me what they offer. We won't draw anyone from the Los Angeles front because of our salaries, because of our beautiful weather, but not because of salaries.
And the goal is if we do get change at the state level, then everybody in the state will benefit. So we would be part of a greater.
That's one of the things that is kind of a little disappointing, but it's no different than it was in the late 80s. Our district spent a lot of money, three other districts also, the largest districts, and the whole state benefited. We stayed on the bottom. It's similar, but now at least there's more individuals in the fight. This would be 19 districts, and I think there's more. It's gotta anger everyone that there was no cost of living adjustment this year. When you see the figure of $200 million short over the last 10 years, what we could've done with even a portion of that money, we'll never know, but I think we would've been much more beneficial. I think I'd have a few less gray hairs, and maybe John too. John doesn't have any gray hairs yet.
So the, so. So the money that the school district spent 20, 30 years ago on those Campbell things, what was the return on the investment? How many, how much, how much money did the school district pay out, and in the end, you know, how much was gained?
You know, the best way I could illustrate that is our salary schedules. In '20, I think our starting salary was $22,000. And within six years, we were in the low 30s. Now we're $48,000. Because of those, that funding formula and the change, and the built-in ECA allowed us to be much more competitive. We were top 10 in the nation through probably 2004 through 2014. Now we're not. But significant benefits. We recoup those dollars quickly. And it was, again, it was, to have a ruling from the Supreme Court that education is a fundamental right of every student in Wyoming was worth whatever our district paid for. And that's very clear, and that's what I think is being ignored right now.
Do you have a, he's over here raising his hand.
In answer to the question, it, the Campbell case has fundamentally reorganized the way that Wyoming funds its schools. From top to bottom, for instance, you have, the funding now is kind of driven through one formula in terms of general operations. But the state also, through Campbell Three and Four, the courts basically said to the legislature, you also have a responsibility to fund all of your buildings and your major maintenance. So the fact that the district is, has, we're debt-free, and that we've done three or four major capital projects, and basically the state has said, hey, we'll help you out. That couldn't have been done without the Campbell decisions. So in answer to, what's the return on investment? I don't know, but it's in several hundreds of millions, if not, you know, more than
So it is action items down below. There's no other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, down to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay, moving on to our person, to our action items. I'm jumping. So first item for action is our personnel.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we recommend that we offer a contract to Courtney Kent as a 10th grade teacher at Aspen. Hopefully, this fills our certified staff. We have many support staff positions, but our certified staff, I think, go in pretty good positions. We have one more, I believe, to fill. We just had to move it. So recommend that you approve this contract.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the contract for Courtney Kent?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Down to our WHSSA membership application, activity enrollment, catastrophic liability insurance.
Madam Chair, just as a reminder, this is, we do this every year at this time of the year, and allows us to participate in Wyoming High School activities. There is a penalty if you don't pay by September 1st. So we recommend that you approve this.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the application enrollment and liability insurance for WHSSA?
Just one question. It says name of high school. Is Horizon included?
Yeah, what we do is we allow Horizon students to participate in Evanston High School activities.
Okay.
Good question.
So moved.
My second.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Down to our approved, our second reading of GCBA professional staff salary schedules.
Madam Chair, members of the board, just, this is our second reading. For members, this allows Unitah County School District Number One to provide 100% of experience, certified teaching experience to all incoming staff. We do have a plan to see how many were hired in the last five years that we may have to move up. Personally, I think we move them up, but we'll see what that's gonna cost us, and I'll bring that to you next.
Just an idea, how many you're looking at, just rough?
I don't think it's that many. I think it's less than 10.
Okay.
I'm not shocked. We recommend that you approve this, etc.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve on second reading, policy GCBA professional staff salary schedules?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Down to Coalition of Wyoming Schools agreement.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I recommend that you approve joining the Coalition Madam Chair, members of the board, I recommend that you approve joining the coalition. What I think we probably need to do is put a letter together, and it's up to you guys, we can approve it next month, or we can just go ahead and let you look at it and make sure you're okay with it, send it in when it's been approved by the individuals. Mr. Phillips, what do you think?
Yeah, I can put the letter together. You can approve it now, or you can wait, it's up to you.
I would say approve it, and then we'll just look at the letter, and then just do the letter.
I think last session we had with, an executive session, was very fruitful. I learned a lot in the presentation and in the answers to the several questions that we had. I was, I was very impressed with the direction that the coalition wants to take. So that's just my opinion, I'm, I'm for it.
Okay. So is there a motion to join the Coalition of Wyoming Schools?
Summate.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And then, like I said, we could just do a letter, and we'll take care of it. Okay, next item for action is to approve the school's safety and security.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I recommend that you approve the individuals discussed in executive session that can still carry according to our safety and security policies in case.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the school's safety and security according to our policy as discussed in executive session?
I, my move to approve, I, second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Down to our board roundtable. Has anybody got some great comments that you want to share?
I'm going to go and say that this community is going to be greatly hurt by the loss of Rick Schuler. I happened to be in high school when he moved here. What a great man. Was here for, even though he was not employed at the school district, he was very supportive of everything that happened. His wife Wendy and his two daughters that are employed here, it's, it's a shock, and like I said, it's a great loss to this community to lose a man like him, so.
Definitely. He will be missed. A funny story, I was, actually had a meeting with Wendy last week, and she was teasing me about the upcoming elections, and had shared with me that Rick Keno was messing around and joking around, and like, maybe I should just run for school board. And Wendy's like, you're just retired, you don't need to do that. So he would have been a great addition.
Yeah.
I'm not a member of the board, but I think it's also appropriate to recognize Don George. He passed away this week, and I know he was a former trustee and contributed a great deal to the school district. He graduated from high school, was very involved in musical programs, a wonderful contributor to the community, and just had his funeral today, but he's another one for whom we should be grateful.
Phenomenal voice.
Definitely. No, he will, no, no, he will be truly missed.
Love sitting in front of the church, I'd actually find him sometime soon.
And it was mentioned that he was the school class president.
Yeah.
'71, '72, I believe.
Yeah.
Because he's, he's a couple of years older than me, so I kind of calculated that.
Thank you for bringing that up, Jeff. Anything else that anybody wants to share? Okay. Well, so we do have, our next item on our agenda is our executive session, so.
I don't think we need one.
No.
Reason for that does not exist, so we can probably do away with that.
Okay, then we can go ahead and do away with that. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Summate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm like, he just asked. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Quickest, quickest one ever.
Oh, not ever.